All right, so sorry it's 10 past 7:00. We had to get some technical things done tonight. But this is the Planning Board meeting of March 31st. And we had our first meeting last night, March 30th. So, and this is in the Carver Middle School cafeteria. So we'll start tonight. I did. We're going to start with the moratorium. We had the agenda.
There's a whole bunch by the table.
Did you have something that you wanted to say, Tom, before we started on these moratorium articles?
Yeah, I did. A couple of technical notes here. So folks have a presentation and we're not sure we're going to be able to get that to work. So I've got to get the clicker for that. So while we're sorting that out, I'd get it. Chair's invitation, my suggestion. I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about moratoriums. It's a very difficult one, I'm sure, standing in front of you. So there are several moratoriums on the agenda for this evening. And a moratorium is zoning. It requires a two-thirds vote. And with that two-thirds vote, it is a temporary measure essentially. You've seen the moratoriums, they're 12 months, they're 11 and a half months. So when those go into place, it affects future developments. Zoning and moratorium are not retroactive. They don't affect anything that's already been permitted. So any solar operations have been permitted, any battery operations have been permitted. Those aren't affected. They go on, they continue on as they are. It only affects future projects. And the thing about a moratorium is, is you take that time, as they say, to study this and decide what you're going to do. Which is a very good idea because if you take that time and produce a better bylaw and bring it back to town meeting, then you're good to go. But the mechanics of a moratorium is it works better with staff help, whether it's serpent or an in-house planner. And Carver doesn't have an in-house planner. I'm the interim here to help out. But these things work out a lot better if you've got a staff person in place. Now, a moratorium is also not extendable infinitum. You get a year to get the work done. That's what it says. The A. Attorney General approves the moratorium. And if any year you're not done and you want to get an extension, the AG is typically going to ask and say, well, where are you at? When did you get done? To determine if they want to extend that moratorium. So with that in mind, they don't affect things that have already happened. They affect things in the future. It starts a clock running and you have to get work done in that timeframe in order to really benefit for the moratorium. So those are the things I wanted to make sure that was clear on what it is. And with that, we'll turn it back over to the chair and we'll see if we can get that thing to work because I understand you have a presentation, correct? All right.
But if you can't, I can speak.
Yeah. I'm not seeing the clicker that the janitor brings to me. So you may be.
I'll start speaking.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, so we'll start off with Article 25. It's the Moratorium on Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Installations. And this is to see if the town will vote to amend Section 3580 of the Town Zoning Bylaw. Large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations to add a new section adopting a 12-month moratorium on the issuance of special permits for new installations for the expansion of existing installations, not including expansions that do not increase the footprint of existing installations for the period of one year from the effective date of the bylaw as set forth below or take any other active relative thereto. 3580.01 Moratorium. Notwithstanding any other provision of the Town of Carver zoning bylaws to the contrary, the town hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the issuance of special permits for the new use of land for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, hereinafter referred to installations, or for the expansion of any existing installations for a period of one year from the effective date of this bylaw, provided that such moratorium shall not apply to the expansion of any existing installation that does not increase the footprint thereof. During the moratorium period, the Planning Board, Select Board, and other town officials shall conduct a review of the Carver zoning bylaw 3580, review solar bylaws in other communities, undertake a planning process that addresses potential impacts of solar photovoltaic installations in Carver, consider the long-term objective for solar photovoltaic installations and their impact on health, safety, and welfare of Carver's citizenry, determine how the town shall reasonably and thoroughly regulate and approve solar electric installations, shall review and address the impacts of current, impending, and potential installations, and may develop a plan to mitigate future impacts of such installations on the general health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of the residents of the Town of Carver, which may include but not be limited to the presentation of suggested bylaw amendments to a future town meeting. And I don't know if I mentioned this, but this was submitted by the Select Board. I don't know if there's anybody here from the Select Board to speak about this tonight. I don't see anybody coming forward, so I guess nobody's here from the Select Board to talk about this. But I don't know, where do we?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please, Tom.
There are several moratoriums related to this. I think Article. Article 39 and Article 40 are both related to solar moratoriums. So we want to open the hearings of 39 and 40 since we're all talking about the same topic. That would make sort of sense.
So open all three?
I'd open all three because that way everybody can talk about what they want to talk about with solar, rather than have this sort of formal, even folks in a box to talk about that particular article.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
No, no, it makes sense. What's the third solar one?
Article 39 is a temporary moratorium for 12 months ground-mounted solar. And Article 40 is an 11 and a half month moratorium. And I think that one of them was submitted by one of the Select Board members, Jen Bogart. And then when that article was adopted by the Select Board, I don't think they were planning on following that. But I think it's Mary Dormer who wrote the other.
Okay, so you're counting the same article twice? One as a citizen for Jen Bogart and the other as a Select Board?
That makes the most sense since we're talking about the same topic. So open all three of those hearings. And then take out all that testimony at one time.
And by third, you mean the solar, the battery and the more?
No, the battery separate.
So Select Board member Jen Bogart submitted a citizen petition.
I have that one.
That's 39, I think.
No. And that one there was adopted by the Select Board. The wording is essentially the same, correct? And so that's essentially two articles because one is the Select Board and one is a private citizen. Then the third by Mary Dormer is a separate article. That's 11 and a half months, not 12 months. Okay, so is the wording on? The 12-month one the same on both of them?
So for parliamentary purposes, I'm going to ask the chair to read the warrant language for both 39 and 40. So we essentially have all three hearings open.
So it's 38 and 39. So.
39 and 40 are solar, 38 is battery.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. Okay, so Article.
You're keeping Matt at home.
Article?
25, 39 and 40.
Okay. So the next one, which also pertains to the solar, is an article petition to amend the Carver zoning bylaw. Article 39, notwithstanding any other provision of the zoning bylaws to the contrary, the town hereby adopts a temporary 12-month moratorium to April 11, 2023, on the new use of land for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations effective immediately upon town vote, provided that such moratorium shall not apply to previously approved specifically permitted projects, provided that any such amendment shall not increase the footprint. During the moratorium period, the town shall conduct a review of the Carver zoning bylaw 3580, review solar bylaws in other communities, undertake a planning process that addresses potential impacts of the solar photovoltaic installations in Carver, consider the long-term objective for the solar photovoltaic installations and their impact on health, safety, and welfare of Carver's citizenry, determine how the town shall reasonably and thoroughly regulate and approve the solar photovoltaic installation, and finally to amend Carver zoning bylaw 3580 accordingly or to take any other active action relative thereto. So that was 39. So the last one that deals with large-scale ground-mounted systems is Article 40, petition to amend the Carver zoning bylaw. The town hereby adopts a temporary 11 and a half month moratorium to March 26, 2023, on the new use of land for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations effective immediately upon town vote, provided that such moratorium shall not apply to a large-scale ground-mounted solar installation previously issued a special permit by the Planning Board and approved by the Conservation Commission, provided that any amendment to a special permit shall not increase the footprint. During the moratorium period, the town shall conduct a review of its zoning bylaws for solar electric installations and undertake a planning process that addresses the current and future impacts of the large-scale ground-mounted solar installation on Carver's residents, consider the long-term objectives for additional solar electric installations in the town and their impact on health, safety, and welfare of the town. So those are the three articles that we have that are about the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. So I don't know, is anybody here that would like to speak?
Yeah, can I say something real quick? I just want to make it. I just need to make a public statement. In accordance with Mass. General Law, that I am the husband of Mary Dormer and the article that she is presenting provides no financial interest to me or my family.
Okay, thank you, Tom. All right. Is there anything that any of the board members want to say about this?
If it's possible, I'd like to meet Attorney Questle to really break down what the difference between the three articles are legally.
Yeah, you got to really, you got to speak up because, you know, this is going to be done by video tonight, the notes for the meeting. So if you could speak up as loud as you can, that would be good.
I was wondering if we could have input from Attorney Questle in regards to the legal differences between the three articles?
There's really none. It's the timing is really the difference. 25 and 40, no, I'm sorry, 25 and 39 are 12 months. And Article 40 is 11 and a half months. Article 25 encapsulates more of what we're looking for when we're trying to pass a moratorium. For example, at the end, it mentions the health and safety and what exactly will be studied. It also mentions that during this moratorium, we could think of amendments to the solar bylaw. The petitioned articles are missing some language. However, we are not allowed to touch petitioned articles. They have to put on the warrant as they were submitted, so.
So you feel, just opinion-based, if you throw all three of these against the Attorney General's wall, one of them is more likely than the other because it contains more appropriate language?
Yes, I think that's fair to say.
Okay.
Idea predates strength.
No, absolutely. No, I just, if we're going to approve something to go forward, I just want to know that it adds some teeth to it.
Yeah, and I think that's fair to say. I also think that you could be looking at some real procedural issues if all three go forward.
Absolutely, yes. That's why I'm trying to get a little clarification. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
So should we pick one out of the three?
I think we should allow the presenters to, and then work from there.
Sure, yeah. I mean, that's the way, I think I'd rather have anybody here that would like to speak about it, let them talk first.
Is anybody from the Select Board here? I didn't.
No, no, there's nobody from the Select Board, no.
So that means that 25 and 39 don't have a representative here?
I don't know. I don't know who, I know the Select Board did two because one's a repeat. And then, was it Mary Dormer that brought another one?
Yes.
Do you want to speak about it, Mary?
Is there any way we can bring? Do you mind if I bring the podium closer to the microphone than the?
Or can we provide a microphone?
I'll get that for you.
I don't mind, Tom.
Let me swing it around a little so you can.
Put that right on it. Will that work? Put that speaker right there.
Alan, can you mute your audio on your side?
I tried to, I don't know. I'm doing it wrong.
Yeah, just use your phone. There's a button on your phone to mute probably. Here's a little feedback coming from your side. That sounds quiet.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, oh, before you speak, I'm sorry. We have one remote participant. Ellen is at home tonight and she's Sedillo and she's doing this by Zoom.
Even as I'm hearing that, Ken.
Oh, is that the room microphone there? The big one?
Yeah, right, the big one.
Welcome back.
Okay. Oh, okay, that may work. I don't know if Mary might want to read this.
You put it right there if you want. If you want, if you want to hand it to the mic, you don't get it back. It's a general rule.
Okay, yeah, just give us your name and address and go ahead.
My name is Mary Dormer. I live at 162 Plymouth Street and I am here.
Yeah, it's in a death loop, you got to turn the mic off.
I have a question.
Get your phone in. Get your phone in.
We need Elon Musk here.
The next time we have a meeting, go to the new school.
So we are asking for an 11 and a half month moratorium on large-scale solar installations. Currently, there are 20 existing and proposed large-ground solar projects within Carver. Most of them have lithium-ion batteries attached to them. One of our concerns is how this affects our water, the aquifer. As you can see, we belong to the Plymouth Soul Source Aquifer, which means that our water supply, our aquifer supplies water for seven towns. And if we pollute it, it is highly susceptible to pollution. If we pollute it, all seven towns are polluted. So some of the sites with the solar have CCA poles in them, which is copper-promiated arsenic poles. They haven't been removed from the barge yet. It's over dual-use primary bonds. And testing has not been done on our water. There's been a lot of clear-cutting of forests and we don't know what the effects are going to be on our community in the future. A moratorium makes sense so that we can do some studies. We can test the water at these sites and see if we're polluting the aquifer. So far, for the large-ground mounted solar installations, 469 acres have been used. Of that 469 acres, 157 acres of forest have been clear-cut. We have filled in river fronds, wetlands, and some sites have had industrial sand mining done to prepare the sites for solar. So this is why we are asking for a yes vote on our moratorium for, just to posit, just to do some studies for, to stop large-ground mounted solar installations for 11 and a half months. So we really like your support. What are? I'm sorry, I think I'm 39, I think.
39 was proposed by the Select Board. I think your article was, you said 11 and a half months? So yours is 38. It must be 38. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the battery storage. It's 30. Did you do 20 months or 11 and a half? Okay, so 11 and a half was number 40. Number 40.
Number 40.
Yep.
So vote yes if you want to keep us safe.
Vote yes if you want to keep us safe, yes.
On number 40.
On number 40.
Yeah, I mean, once you're done, then I'll ask if anybody else would like to come up. Is there anybody else in the room here that would like to speak about any of these articles? I have a question. Is this going to affect, I have either for Amy or for Tom, is this going to affect the building on the Business Park, the Green Business Park with the solar on top of the building?
That would not be ground-mounted.
I just wanted to make sure that.
It's on top of the building.
Excuse me, but last night the article.
If you could just give us your name, please, for the record.
I do know Lathan, well, no, Lathan, I'm sure. The question I'd like to ask is, we had the solar and it was the 3580, I think that was the one, right? And when the man, when the lawyer got up, he said that if we attached the wording to that, the array on top of the roof, if this passed, it would be null and void. So our language for the Green Business Park, that might should be singular. I mean, writing it just with solar array, it's a new kind, you know, it's on the roof. There's nothing to do with it.
Right. All three of these say large-scale ground-mounted though. All of these, all three articles specify large-scale ground-mounted?
But we had wording in one of them and it was 3580. Should remember last night.
I do, yeah. I just don't.
Can I say something? Last night when we talked about this, they said it wouldn't affect it because you wouldn't be able to put the building up in 11 and a half months.
We would, yes, it would delay it, right?
No, no. You could not put the building up in 11 and a half months so it would not stop from doing that.
That's not what the, that's not what the.
Well, if you could, hold on, it has to be permitted, but Tom.
If I may, just to clarify what counsel said, this is a moratorium that's been proposed for ground-mounted solar, not for something on the roof of a building. The Green Office Park and building that building and having solar on the roof is not subject to large-scale ground-mounted because it's not on the ground. It doesn't affect it.
But the wording.
It doesn't affect, I know you're very inquisitive and we have these conversations sometimes over and over, but because it's on the roof, it's not ground-mounted and these moratoriums deal with large-scale ground-mounted solar. Is that what I heard you say, counsel? Correct, doesn't affect it.
Well, when the lawyer spoke last night, he kind of gave me the opinion that it would happen again.
No, the official word is no, it won't affect that. So, all right. Anybody else in the audience have anything else to say about this? Well. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
My name is Kim Gold, so I live in 11.
If you could maybe just stand up and use that, you have to for the record, if you could speak up.
I just want to know, what is the benefit of all this solar power? We're not seeing any decrease in our electrical bill. In fact, mine has been like, was, my bill was like almost $400.
It doesn't do that, the solar.
Like what is the benefit in this in any way?
The benefit is, it depends on what, where it's located. But for the cranberry growers that have been putting it on their property, they lease the property to the solar companies. And so they get money, they get paid for leasing that so the solar panels will be on their property. So it helps them maintain their bogs. We've had a lot of small cranberry growers come before us and they said, we're actually losing money growing cranberries, but with the solar installations on our property, we can make some money from that to keep our cranberry bogs going. Otherwise, some of them would have to abandon them. That's one thing. The second thing is, the town gets tax money from these projects. It's not electricity. We get taxes from these. When the fields are built, they have inspections and that's worth thousands of dollars for each field. There's taxes over the 20-year period that the solar properties have to pay. There's also, there's also an upfront fee.
It's actually payment via taxes.
Yeah, there's also an upfront, under the pilot program.
So we're paying a lot less than.
We spoke about this at a meeting when our last planner was here and those fees go up to, with the pilot project and the taxes and everything, it's over $400,000. I do have the paper here. We had, and yeah, people keep asking this question all the time, but there was an Assistant Finance Director here, Craig Schoeff. He's no longer here. He put together this paper which was presented. It's dated 8/18/2021. And it's about five of the solar projects that were being built in town. One was Ravenbrook, one was Kiasage Federal Road Solar LLC, Navasun, and Sunraise. And I won't go through all the details, but he kind of, he did a summary of the presented projects and the pilot total for these projects came out to $323,000. So that money goes to the town. And then there was taxes. And I would imagine, it doesn't, it's not specific, but it's over the 20-year period that these fields usually in use. And that amounted to $66,000. So you're talking over $400,000 in tax money the town gets. Not getting volume.
I have a question, if I may.
Ellen's not getting volume, she said. Yes, go ahead.
I just have a question. My family.
If you could give us your name and address, please?
Sure. Alex Machado, 55 Cranberry Road. My family's been a long-time cranberry grower in Carver since like the '60s and '70s and we've experienced groundwater contamination through a solar installation towards 495 Southbound. Behind Berry Guy's Farm Stand, there's a solar attempt there that was put in. They have pressure-treated beams that they pushed 30 feet into the ground. And that runs from an aquifer. from an aquifer from Mile Stair to State Forest and supplies fresh water all through the state of Massachusetts. It's one of the largest sand aquifers in the state. So I'm just wondering how it would affect an aquifer in North Carter if the southern one is already contaminated. And on top of that, if this is ground mounted then, and that was the effect it had there, how is the ground mounting going to change in this attempt? And how is that going to differ from the previous one?
If it's all right, the planning board has never allowed pressure treated poles to be used in any of these projects and it is one singular aquifer, it's just various tributaries to it, so it is considered as a whole. So contamination in one part is theoretically a contamination of a larger body. So just-
So those poles are supposed to come out?
Yeah.
I mean, I imagine you've been to the conservation and planning board meetings and it's being held up by a lawsuit, but they're supposed to, those poles are supposed to come out and they're supposed to be replaced by concrete poles.
Yeah.
Non-contaminating, so.
But how long has that taken, though? That's what I'm saying. So they've been in for a while, so we know they're contaminating, but nothing's changed about the fact that they're still sitting there contaminating. That's the only thing I have to add to it.
To the extent of the contamination, that's, that, I mean, they've tested around the poles and they found that there wasn't contamination around the poles. I don't know if you went to the last Conservation Commission meeting when they voted on pulling those poles out and replacing with the concrete poles, but they, they had a bunch of engineers there and they all spoke about, you know, the testing that they did around all these poles. So supposedly, there wasn't any contamination coming from those. Large amount of contamination, but they, but when the new poles are put in, they're going to retest, from my memory, because I'm not on the Conservation Commission, but I did attend that meeting, and they're going to retest around those poles just to see if there's any more contamination there, that's all.
But back to your question, if it passes these, I believe all three of these do require a review of the solar bylaws and the ground mounted solar bylaws and that will be a public process and certainly we'll be bringing in input in regards to that.
Yeah, I just share concern because-
Sure.
Carver is like a huge freshwater aquifer for the local area and it's been called, you know, like the big swamp of Massachusetts. We're all wetlands and rivers, so if anything runs and goes the wrong way, it's all of our drinking water that is affected by it, so.
Absolutely.
Did you see the contamination?
Yeah, I mean, like, pretty much a lot of the chemicals from cranberry bogs that old growers used in the past have caused, you know, cancer causing me, it's turned into groundwater aquifers. So I'm just saying for future endeavors, if we're to look for solar energy and that type of thing, we should make sure that what we're putting into the ground isn't going to mess things up like we've done in the past.
I thought I might have missed some of the story. What argument said that what's already there on Berry Guys is affecting your polls?
No, no, not our box. What I'm saying, in the event that there were conservatives to enter the groundwater aquifer, we wouldn't want that to spread like it had in the past.
I live on Tremont Street, 246-
Okay, if you, I'm sorry, if you want to speak, you got to get up and give your name and address, please.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like, yes?
25 Mountain Street, two things. When I went to that meeting about the poles coming out, and I don't know if they talked about the depth, that they took the samples, they take the samples?
Yes, they did talk about that. They did talk about that.
The other thing is, and you get, the lady asked about, you know, what are we gaining from this? And I think, I think the term, you know, green energy, but I think it is the green, it's the money that's coming in, it's not about the effectiveness of the solar panels and the solar fields and climate change and all of that. I think that's just a sunscreen to get, you know, for the town to get money and, you know, whoever else is getting money from it. Take the amount of energy that it takes to put up on these fields, you're never going to get back from the life expectancy of the panels. So money is the objective and not climate change or warming or any-
That's your opinion, but, yeah, that's your personal opinion. I don't, I don't agree with that. Anybody else? If you could just get up and just speak as loudly as you can, give your name and address, please.
246 Tremont Street. And I do have a question. There seems to be not concrete information about when those poles, I live on Tremont and I know Rochester has the same situation and there's another site. When are the poles going to be removed?
They are under order. They should have been removed and I believe it's been mentioned that there's a lawsuit that's holding that up.
Tom?
So I've had a couple of conversations with the conservation agent about this as well. So the Conservation Commission issued an order that says, pull out the wooden poles, put in the concrete poles. So someone has appealed that order of conditions. And so while the lawsuit is going through the court, the applicant doesn't want to do anything because the judge might say this, the judge might say that. So they have to wait effectively until the lawsuit is resolved, until they can move forward with the order of conditions the Conservation Commission gave to pull the wooden poles out.
Is there, while all this is happening in the courts, is there ongoing water samples being taken from these sites with these arsenated, these arsenic poles?
I have no idea.
Well, who's going to pay for, okay, say the people on Rochester Road, who's going to pay to have their wells tested?
I do not know, but-
I've had my-
So just to review, the Conservation Commission said, take them out, and someone in the town sued the Conservation Commission and said, I don't want you to take them out. And until that lawsuit is resolved, nothing else can happen with those poles coming out of the ground.
So basically, the homeowners have to, they have to just go out and, well, it's not cheap. It's very expensive to have a thorough water test done, so now I guess it's just up to each individual homeowner to foot that bill and I don't think that's right. I don't think that's fair.
I think you have to talk to the Board of Health about that. Maybe they might have some information for you.
Mr. Chair? Uh, Mr. Chair, again, Amy Quastle, Town Counsel. I'm getting very concerned that we are, we are not, we're not on topic.
Yeah.
And the issue of the lawsuit and the treated pole is not anywhere on this hearing notice.
Right.
What we are, what the board is contemplating right now are green moratoriums, which in any event would be positive in that situation, so, but I'm very concerned about the open meeting and the fact that the hearing notice said certain things.
All right. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about the, specifically about the articles? Yeah.
Dorothy Pollitt, 158 High Street. My question is this, you say the solar fields are good, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
You go ahead, please.
The solar fields are good for 20 years.
Generally, it's the least for 20 years, yeah.
Right. So during this moratorium, should we be granted it, will the town study what happens to all of that solar stuff in 20 years and who's going to pay to replace it and who's going to pay to dispose of it? Because I don't think it's, I mean, is that part of the moratorium study that you would consider?
I don't know. In the language of the bylaw, yes, but generally, we require a bond in the expected costs of removal and to be placed so that should the owner of the solar equipment just up and leave, that there's money in the bank to take care of it. That's part of our approval process.
Decommissioning.
Decommissioning, yes. But it's also, in the bylaws, it does, the proposed bylaw amendments, it does call for that.
Is that money given upfront?
It's given up, right? Yeah.
It's a bond. It's a bond, I believe, that they put up.
Guaranteed.
So, but, but anyway, anybody else would like to speak? Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see you there, yeah.
James O'Brien, 4th grade Meadow Drive. We know each other, Mr. Mackey. We were in the beginning of this whole thing when that first solar field went in on Purchase Street, right? And I've been through this process and I was also a member of both solar bylaws. And I'm speaking to you and thank you for being here, but with all due respect, you're not from here. You are and you're our defense, you're our wall. You cried before that we don't have any teeth and we need teeth and we gave you teeth, right? And I'm not actually picking a side on any of this right now because I'm talking to you as well, that we developed something that you as board members know, that you go to town meetings often to modify bylaws and to change bylaws, because you know as things change, things need to be changed. But you're our defense, right? You're to get the green from them and they're to bring the green in, but in the beginning, many of the solar bylaw companies that spoke to us said, you know, just like anything in life, there's good companies and there's bad companies. So you're our protection to make sure that the companies that you're bringing in aren't just here for their green, but you're protecting our defenses as well, knowing that those regulations that were made may need to be modified as the things that people are bringing forward are going to change and increase. So to you as well, I think he's made it pretty clear that the point is, you've got a year to do this. And from looking what the selectmen have said and looking what's going on, you're going to have to work really hard to get the right kind of funding within a moratorium timeframe to get the test done that you really want to have done. That stuff doesn't happen overnight. It's going to be hard to do and especially the way you see things move, they move very slowly on one side. So all you're really doing is delaying the inevitable, which is going to, from their perspective and their perspective, end up delaying a cost ineffective process. So there's lots of things that still need to be investigated because as they come out with these new technologies and these new things, there's not guarantees with them. And generally, the people that are going to come in are really here for the green and they're not here with a common sense of community and protection. There are some that are, but from what I've learned in the process, not most of them. That's where you guys come in. That's your job, like you are to get that in, but you're supposed to be protecting our livelihood and protecting our homes and our water and the things that we're here. I want to believe that that's what you're here for, because I've been through this before where that process didn't work that way. And my hope is that when we show up at town meeting, that that's what we get to see, a group of people who are really out there, not just to bring projects in and move Carver forward into the new world, but to maintain the community and the protections that we have, conservation wise, land wise, and residential wise, as well as not taking away from those cranberry owners who need some of these things to occur. But you of all should know that this should be done in the right way and I'm not saying it's not or it is, but I hope that I'm putting our faith in you, that you will do that and make the right decisions in that process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Donna Corian, 278 South Meadow Village. I just have one thing to say. I'm a little confused on the articles that are out here, but to Cranberry Point Battery Storage Project?
We're not talking about that right now. We're just doing the solar, large ground mounted solar right now.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak about the ground mounted solar? All right, I don't see anybody.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Dorothy Pollitt, 158 High Street. So you said initially that the cranberry bogs owners require these solar panels all along the cranberry bogs and that they pay not a tax every year on them, but they give the town a cover, the solar company gives the town a cover, a certain amount of money when they put that project on the cranberry bogs. So are the growers actually paying agricultural tax on the whole solar field plus the cranberry bogs? Or is there no tax being done on a quarterly basis for the solar panels?
No, they are paying taxes on the property, but they're receiving money from-
Separate tax and the agricultural tax?
How does that go now?
The equipment tax is separate, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's an equipment tax and that's what the pilot program is for. They get, the town gets that upfront, but it's over a certain amount, it is. I mean, Tom explained it to me, I don't know, can you explain that?
So there are property taxes and there are taxes on the equipment. So both of these pay. So the cranberry grower pays the tax on his property because he's growing cranberries. There's a tax that elevated the value of the property because there's solar panels on it and there's a price for the equipment. And that equipment price gets depreciated over the years. So they typically tend to average that depreciated price over 20 years and that's what gets paid in, those two times of taxes, property taxes, equipment taxes. And over the life of the project for 20 years, the property, the property tax continues to be paid, but the tax on the equipment basically goes to zero because at that point the equipment is at zero. I'm not a financial genius or a tax person, but that's essentially how it works. But none of that affects what we're talking about tonight because we're talking about a moratorium for solar going forward and how the bylaw might change in the future.
All right, there's anybody else that would like to speak? All right, I just want to put my thoughts out there. When I first saw these three articles, I'm kind of looking at it as two sides. At first, when I saw it, I was opposed to it. I thought that we had a good bylaw in place. We had used it, you know, over the years and the bylaw, I mean, the last man that just spoke, he was on the bylaw committee and that went for several months. So it wasn't a thing that just went real quickly. There was a lot of study, a lot of work that was put into it. So, and I, we've had a few glitches along the way, but part of that was because of COVID and I think communications with the building inspector and, which was part-time and, so, but we are finding as time goes on that if we write a lot of things in the conditions about these concerns, that it takes care of that. So initially, I thought about it, then I, and then I was thinking also, at the last town meeting, our last town planner, we had some changes to the bylaws and it was for clarification and there are a lot of places in the bylaw that need clarification. So I think, so then I thought about that. And then I was talking to Tom Bott and there was concerns about all the tree cutting that's being done. And Tom kind of explained to me that in some towns, and I hope I get this right, some towns, they figured out the size of the field, size of the property, and if there's trees to be cut down, it can only be a certain percentage. Is that how that went?
The bylaws that I've written previously said, limited the amount of tree clearing on a solar array to two acres. So if you've got a 40-acre site, you can only cut two acres of trees. That's what the other bylaws that I've written other places are. I don't know, there's a provision for that here, but those are the things that we look at in permitting and the things that the state actually looks at as things that are important. Put solar where it should be and not just go in and clear cut a field and put solar in.
So I was, thank you, Tom, for that explanation. So I was kind of conflicted. I didn't know, so I was thinking about it this afternoon and I think that, as Tom explained, though, I think if this was, solar bylaw was ever looked at again, it really needs to be looked at by the town planner, by the building inspector that uses this and by the planning board and so, but I think, a year goes by pretty quickly, so I don't think it would hurt to have this moratorium, the more I thought about it this afternoon, to do a little more clarification, a little more work on the bylaw. So this afternoon, I was thinking that I would vote for this. I'm just wondering how the other members of the board-
I'm in favor, I'm just torn because there's three of them. I, we have to, we, I'm more leaning towards the select board one because our attorney says that there's more teeth to work with.
Yeah.
But I don't want- But I don't want to vote against the other two either because I think it's an important issue that needs to be brought. And as a matter of fact, that all three of these will appear on the town warrant because they weren't proposed by us. It's from the select board and citizens, so all three of them will be on the town warrant. So it's tough on how to recommend. That's why I'm kind of torn.
Does Tom or Amy have a suggestion how we should handle this?
I do, I guess, I'm wondering if we should ask Ms. Dormer if there's anything that she objects to in Article 25. Can you read the article 25?
Article 25, yeah, it's on-
Can somebody give her, I don't know if she's got a copy of it?
Yeah. It's, right. Would you like to, I can read it again. It's the more lengthy one. But you can look at this. And is that the body?
No, Connie, I appreciate the way you put that because that helps me with my decision on how to vote.
Right, because I'm kind of, I don't want to vote the other ones down, but-
But in voting for, voting not-
Right, exactly.
We're almost putting a band-aid on it for a year, 11 and a half months.
This is only by law committee and even though Bruce Mackey stepped out from the planning board, a multiple will stick around.
I do too.
So some of the things, some of the research that we've been doing, is that the AG's been kicking, kicking anything back for 12 months.
Yeah, just give us your name for the record again.
She submitted 11 and a half months. We have these solar planted fields and they happen to be on Cranberry Bog territory. Do they also get extra mediency as far as conservation, staying so many feet away from the wetlands? Do they also have to abide by, or do they get the agricultural mediency?
Well, we are going off into the weeds again by doing this. We're not really addressing the article, but yeah, they have-
The article is solar mounted, right?
Yeah, I mean, there are setbacks that are associated with the solar projects in the bylaw. What's that?
Bog mounted solar has to go to Concom. Anything within that area? No?
If they're lowland.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I believe that conservation still has to take a look at it, but we're kind of going off course here. But there are setback requirements required by the planning board in the, in our bylaws.
So I read this and the only thing that I would like to see changed is the word "may" to "will," where it says, "And they may develop a plan to mitigate future impacts of such installations on the general health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of the residents of the town of Carver."
See, I don't think we can change it except at town meeting, right?
Well-
Because it's-
This is the place, it is not a petitioned article.
Well, would you accept a motion?
So do we have to make a motion for that, to add that?
And would you mind "shall"? Instead of "will," they "shall"?
Well, legally, how is that defined? Is it like or and?
"Shall" is required.
Okay.
Maybe it's not.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to change the word "may" to "shall" in the proposed article as defined, Article 25 is defined.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so Mr. Shea made the motion, Mr. Gasky second. Further discussion, seeing none. Those in favor, it's going to be a roll call vote because Ellen's on remote. So let me start with, let me start with Mr. Shea.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye.
All right, so this was unanimous.
Now, one last question, Ms. Quinzel. Is the 12-month moratorium problematic in regards to the legality of it? Is 11 and a half months? Okay.
All right. So do we, so we have to, do we vote on all three to recommend to-
Yes, I would recommend voting on all three.
Okay.
Let's, we have to close the public hearing first.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone that has anything more to say before I close the public hearing on Article 25? All right, seeing none, no one, let's, I'd accept a motion to close the hearing for Article 25.
Cornelius Shea so makes that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Shea made the motion, Mr. Robinson second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote, Mr. Shea.
Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye.
All right, so that was unanimous. So then let's go to-
Article 39.
39. So Article 39, so I'll entertain a motion. Anybody else have anything to say so before we close the public hearing on Article 39? Okay, seeing, seeing none.
Mr. Shea will make a motion to close Article 39.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing for Article 39.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gasky, second that. Further discussion, seeing none, those in favor, Mr. Shea?
Well, we're going to make a motion. Oh, aye, yes. Because we're closing the public-
It's the whole- Cornelius, John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye.
Okay, so we've closed the public hearing on two of them. So we'll go to article number 40. All right, so is there any further discussion on Article 40 by the public? Okay, so let's close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Article 40.
Cornelius Shea makes a motion to close the article, a public hearing for Article 40.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Mr. Shea made the motion, Mr. Robinson second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, Mr. Shea.
Aye. John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye.
All right. Okay, so now we'll go back and we'll vote to recommend to town meeting.
We recommend the 25 already, so we're on-
Do we, okay, so we closed the public hearing and recommended it?
And recommended it.
Okay, so let's go to 39.
Cornelius Shea will make a motion to recommend Article 39 for town meeting.
Yep, that's how you word it, right? Yep. Okay, yep.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Gasky. Let's take a vote.
Cornelius Shea says nay.
Oh, is that what, which one is?
Proceed that way.
So I feel that the original Article 25 holds more teeth and I think that's the one that the town should focus on. So I'm recommending that Article 25 was my motion to bring it forward, but I'm not recommend, I would, I would recommend 29 and 39 without prejudice. I would push those aside.
Is that the way we should do this?
You can vote to not recommend 39 and 40, or you can vote to recommend 39 and 40 and vote no.
Can I amend my motion? I would, I, my motion, I would like to amend my motion to say-
Just say no. Get a t-shirt, Tom.
The motion to not recommend Article 39 and 40 without prejudice.
Okay, so you're going to do both together? We can do both together?
Yeah, so not recommend them without prejudice. So a yes vote, the vote, if the second is means, okay.
Just to make sure, 39 and 40 are the two citizen petitions? They are.
But those, but those are the same as Article 25.
Right, right. They're, just the way things, the, what's in front of me is, it's just confusing.
No, I got it. It's, yeah, yeah. I couldn't even find it. My motion has not been seconded.
Am I motioning no on sec, by seconding that to agree with Mr. Shea?
No, he made a motion to not recommend. So you seconded that motion.
I second that motion.
And then the vote would be positive to not recommend.
To for 39 and 40, okay. So, okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Shea and a second by Mr. Robinson. Further discussion, seeing none, let's take a vote.
So I, Cornelius Shea votes aye.
Okay. Yep.
Can you go over that again? You're cutting in and out and I don't, I'm really confused.
Okay, so Mr., because we have the first Article 39, 25, that covers this photovoltaic installation moratorium, we're voting, Mr. Shea brought up a motion to, to, what did he say it?
Cornelius Shea motions not to recommend Article 39 and 40 without prejudice.
So he's not recommending 39 and 40 because they're kind of, they're redundant. So we'll just stick with that first one. So that's what we, that's the way we'll think about this, okay? Because we have three that dealt with the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and Mr. Shea voted aye. Mr. Gasky?
I'm going to vote nay.
Okay. Mr. Robinson?
Kevin Robinson votes aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye. Ellen?
Aye.
All right, so it was, it was four to one, three to one, four to one, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the town needs to see all of them.
No, it will. All three articles will be presented on the board.
They're all, they're all, like you said, I think they're all good.
No, they are, I agree with you, they're all good.
Worth consideration.
I was, yes.
Okay, so the next, we'll go on to, we've done this, so the next one will be, we'll do, we'll do them in order. It's number 31, which is Article 31.
That's the battery storage?
No, that's-
No, that's the non-marijuana.
Oh, okay.
So-
Recreational marijuana?
Yeah, so this 31 was an article petitioned to amend the Carver zoning map, respectfully requesting the town of Carver to amend Article 21, proposing a change to non-medical marijuana overlay district, North Overlay, to accept and approve map 21, lot 4-4, for use as a marijuana cultivation and processing facility. So I looked at this and it seemed like, I don't know if everybody else has looked at this, but we have the non-medical marijuana on one side of 58 and this lot was separate and it's away from it. To me, it's spot zoning, so I would-
Is it on the other side of 44?
Oh, 44, 44.
Is it in a residential district?
Tom, do you-
If the applicant-
It actually encompasses the-
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, this is what it is.
Are we talking about this?
Yeah, this one over here is down here.
That's on Lemon Street, right?
Is the applicant here? Is anybody here representing this article? All right, I guess not.
So to your point, lot 4, map 4, is on Lemon Street. It's in an industrial district, but it's not contiguous to the overlay district. So the overlay district is fully on the north side of Route 44 and it splits 58 on the north side of 44. So this is a separate individual parcel, not contiguous, not in the area. And it's typically not what you would see if you were expanding an overlay district. Usually that would be contiguous with the areas you've got.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Is there anybody in the public, in the audience that would like to speak about this? If you could, if you could just come up, because you need a microphone, so you just give us your name and address.
Hey, I'm Patty Cooney. I live at 5 Canterbury Town in Carver. So I don't know about any of this stuff. This is my first time coming to one of these things and it's kind of like off-subject, but everybody is so up in arms about this solar stuff. I'm a very earthy, crunchy type of person and hemp is like a beautiful thing. Instead of worrying about how we're going to pollute our groundwater with all these solar things, why don't we open up more hemp farms? You know how much paper you can make? You can make biofuel with this. You wouldn't have to have all these things going on about contaminating stuff because it has to just grow good stuff. It really does. And I don't know where this person is and I would think that if God and people are trying to get this to pass, that they would be here, but I don't know.
Well, I appreciate your opinion, but right now, what we're talking about is there's a marijuana district that we've already established in South Carver and this lot is away from it. And we have to go by law and so this is considered, if it's not contiguous with this parcel next to it, then we can't rezone it, it's spot zoning. So legally, I don't think we can recommend this. I mean, it's not that we, we don't, we're for or against it, it's just legally, he can't do what he wants to do regularly. It's not that anybody here is for or against marijuana.
So what is it even on the ballot thing for them?
This, this person, I believe, bought the property where the church used to be and they're opening up a marijuana facility to sale, to sell marijuana there. And from the petition, it seems that he, he's looking at purchasing or whatever this lot to grow marijuana.
This is, this is North Carver, though. This isn't-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, North Carver. Okay, I'm sorry, North Carver.
So this is down by the cement factory, but we don't even know if the person who put this forward is the owner of the property. That's problematic.
You can't grow hemp if you don't have clean water. You can't grow cranberries. You can't grow anything else. That's the whole point.
All right.
But to your point, it-
But legally, it's spot zoning, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it. So let's, so if we could close the, if there's nobody else in the audience that wants to speak about this, let's close the, the public hearing for Article 31.
Cornelius Shea makes a motion to close the public hearing on Article 31.
Do I have a second?
Second.
John Gasky, second. All right, so further discussion, seeing none, let's vote, Mr. Shea.
Aye, Cornelius Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
So we're seeing-
For closing.
For closing.
Oh, for closing, that's right. I'm sorry. Bruce Mackey says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye.
Okay, now, we want to vote to recommend or not recommend.
Cornelius Shea will make a motion not to recommend Article 31.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, oh no, we're just, we're just voting on this to recommend. We don't, we don't have to make a motion. We're just voting to recommend or not recommend the town meeting. So you, so you said-
Cornelius Shea does not recommend.
Okay, so you said no, Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky does not recommend.
Okay, Kevin?
Do not recommend.
Okay, Bruce Mackey, not, not to recommend, and Ellen?
Not to recommend.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, so the next, so, okay, so the next- So, um, so the next, we, uh, so, okay, so the next, so we already, so now we're going to the battery storage. So we've done the moratorium thirty-nine and we've done forty, so we're going to the battery storage, which is Article, uh, thirty-eight. So, uh, Article thirty-eight is an article petition to amend the Carver zoning bylaw to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw. Article thirty-eight, the town hereby adopts a temporary eleven-and-a-half-month moratorium to March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three on the new use of lean for battery storage effective immediately upon town vote. During the moratorium period, the town shall adopt new zoning bylaws for battery storage and undertake a planning process that addresses the current and future impacts of battery storage facilities on Carver's residents. Consider the long-term objectives for additional battery storage facilities in the town and their impact on health, safety, and welfare of the town. Um, and, okay, so this was brought to us by Ms. Dorma, okay? If you would like to speak about it, please.
Hi, again. So again, I am here on behalf of Carver's concerned citizens. So the reason for the moratorium is that there is a proposed, uh, battery project for a hundred and fifty megawatt battery energy storage facility, um, right off of Thum Street. And it is in a plastic, um, fresh food area. It is adjacent to the existing, um, air source electrical equipment and, I believe, transformers. And they wanna put a hundred and sixteen lithium-ion storage batteries on a six, a parcel of land.
If I could just interrupt, I'm sorry, but that's something, this is the Cranberry Point, this is a project that's already been approved by the planning board.
Yes, but it has not been approved by the state.
It's not been approved by the state, therefore we're bringing forward the bridge to...
Okay, okay, wait, okay. So how, so Amy, how, how do we handle this, do you? We have Cranberry Point, uh, it's a battery storage facility. I believe we approved that, I think probably a couple of years ago now, it's, it's been a while. Um, and then they came before us, uh, a few months back for minor modification. So I know that, um, Tom, at the beginning of, of this, uh, talking about these articles, spoke that facilities like this that had already been approved by the planning board were gonna, couldn't be affected by a moratorium.
That's correct, under forty-eight is section six. Well, if, if I may, actually, power, um, Cranberry Point actually agrees with us that if this moratorium passes, that it would stop the construction of it. If I could read a letter that they sent the select board, I'll read just a paragraph. I am writing with respect to the ten residents, town meeting warrant, Article, Article petition that would place an eleven-and-a-half-month moratorium on battery storage facilities in the town of Carver. This petition would prohibit the construction of any battery storage project until March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. For the reasons outlined below, we are writing to respectfully request that the board vote not to support the proposed moratorium.
So, so Mr. Chairman, that doesn't say that their project can't go forward. So under forty-eight, section six, if, if, if there's a permit that's been issued and hasn't been appealed, um, prior to the first notification of forty-eight, section five, public hearing, then it's a pre-existing, it would be a pre-existing use, so it won't affect it. Perhaps it might affect, um, any kind of, um, funding or state permit, but with the zoning bylaw, it will not, it will not impact it.
I, it seems that this is my...
I'd like to speak, please.
Okay, wait, wait, one at a time, I'll get to you, if you could just hold on. Did you have anything more to say?
Nope, that's just my opinion. I really will...
So we're saying that we, even though the planning board approved this, this, you feel that it won't affect this, but it might affect...
Not necessarily, not from, not from the local permitting level. It's already been permitted. I don't know what will happen at the state, I don't know what will happen with their funding, that's not, that's not in our purview. And it most definitely will prohibit permitting of, of an additional facility in the next eleven-and-a-half months.
Okay, so, all right, and we, we haven't had any contact with or correspondence with these, with Cranberry Point, they, I don't even know if they know about this proposed moratorium?
The letter sheet is just red.
Okay, all right, all right, I'm, sorry, I'll, I'll let you go then if you, if you can explain that.
I, I think that if we show yes to stop it, I think we can be successful to stop this project and let the town of Carver really fit, make sure that it's safe for this town, make sure that it's the right, it's the right thing for our town. As a community, our voice, it can be loud. And what we need to do is we need to band together and we need to say no. We do not want this bomb in our backyard. This is point six miles away from the elementary school. It, there are nine-hundred-seventy-five homes around it. Five-hundred of them are within, um, a thousand feet, eight-hundred to a thousand feet. Um, these batteries are known to explode, there have been several explosions. In one, one explosion just last year in Illinois burned for three days and they had to use cement to put it out. I don't think our fire department is ready for that. And what we need to do is we need to get our fire department ready if this is something that we choose to have, but we definitely should not have it in a residential area. One of the things that we have asked, um, the planning board with this proposal, we have come up with some things that we would like to see happen during this moratorium pro, um, period. We would like to get a third party to come in and bet, um, for hazard analysis, mitigation analysis, and an environmental impact analysis. If they have to put it out with water, that, that water is, it causes gases to go up into the air and the gases are poisonous. We need to know what the escape route will be, we need to know how they're going to evacuate not only the tenants that are directly, that are direct abutters, but also in the historic district, at the schools, at town hall. And we wanna, whoever wants to join Carver Concerned Citizens, we wanna be fully involved in this. We also would like to know, we want proof of liability so that if anything does go wrong, that we know who is going to be responsible for loss of life, for our water being contaminated. We wanted, we want them to ensure every single fireman for not less than two million dollars in case they lose their life fighting this bomb. They are blowing up. This is something important, this is something that you, you know, great, it's making money, it's not making money for Carver. We're not gonna see any of that money. And you're putting it in an area where there are already transformers. So I would request that everybody vote yes on the twelve. Anybody else?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, if you could come up and...
My name is Dan Farini and I live on Fosdick Road. Many of you have seen the posts, look on Facebook, getting everybody alerted to what's going on here. Um, not you folks, but some of the agreements for this have been done behind closed doors without town meetings, without anybody in this room really knowing what's going on and what's happening to our town. All right? I've looked into this, um, I've looked at Cranberry Point Energy Storage. They're actually a shell company. They're owned by another company which is called Plus Powers. And if you go on their website, you cannot find out who owns the company, who manages the company, who the CEO or anyone is, because the owners of this company are not public figures because they don't wanna be known in case there's an issue. If there's an issue, they'll just disappear and we're left holding the bag. All right? This is gonna be installed in my neighborhood, anybody know where Pritchett Street is, where the high-tension wires are? If you look down the high-tension wires, you see the transfer station. That's where it's going to be in that neighborhood, behind all the houses in our neighborhood, less than six-hundred feet from it, within six-hundred feet from nine-hundred homes. I don't think anybody knew about this. I've actually stood before the state in the state meetings and complained about this and the state does not believe that the people in Carver are against this because nobody has spoken out and that's what we're here for, to go before the town meeting, to get everybody involved and give the town a voice and shut this damn thing down. So we all can say what happens to us. If this thing goes off, we are screwed, because once one of these gets on fire, you cannot put it out. There was one in Australia that went on fire and, and the news says a hundred and fifty firefighters with three fire trucks, four days it took them to put it out, they actually stood by and cooled the other towers, the other batteries, so they wouldn't spread. They had to wait for it to burn itself down into the ground, which contaminated the air, the water, and everything around it. Our main aqueduct runs underneath this proposed facility and if something happens, the town has no water. And again, this company will disappear and leave us all holding the bag. So my thing tonight is, I'm asking this board to stand up and bring this to the town meeting and let us, town as a town, vote for it and vote against it. Thank you very much.
Just, just for the level of clarity, that there's nothing that we do is gonna stop this from going, this will go to town meeting no matter how the, the board votes.
And I'm asking you to support the vote and push it forward tonight as a committee and stand up for the rest of us. That's what everybody here is for. They're against this. We finally found out what's going on in the town and we are against this. Our little town is becoming used and we are tired of it. And if necessary, I will...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, you're out of order, please.
All right, I'm out of order.
Yeah, if you could, if you could, if you want to speak, just come up and give us your name and address again for the record?
Alex Machado, fifty-five Cranberry Road. I'm a, I'm a wildland firefighter for the state of Massachusetts. I actually operate the fire towers for Kingston, Plymouth, Middleboro, the whole District Two fire region. And, uh, we triangulate brush fires from the towers and just in the summer of last two years ago, when we had the heat wave, there was over one-thousand-two-hundred brush fires just in our district. So most of the brush wires and the calls that go in through the Carver Fire Department and the surrounding towns, they come from high-tension wires and branches that fall on them. Should you guys build this facility here, everyone should be aware that one of the highest frequency spots that brush fires occur is near high-tension wires. It's pretty likely that there will be a fire, if not on it, right around it. And if it, if we can't stop it, which we can't always stop it, let's just say, for example, of a few hundred of the twelve, twelve-hundred fires we had, they gained over five acres of land within a couple of hours because when the wind speed picks up and the topography's right, which in a sand pit and heat with all dry brush, with a narrow chute of wind to shoot right down the power lines, it's gonna spread quickly and there's nothing we're gonna be able to do about it. That's just an opinion from someone who has been to California, has done work in wildland firefighting throughout Massachusetts, and that's the reality of a fire situation. So I want everyone to be aware of that as well. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else wanna speak? All right, I'll, I, all I can say about this is, uh, is that we, uh, this came before the planning board, well, there's a couple of things here, uh, well, this came before the planning board a couple of years ago, I believe, and, um, I don't think all the members here were there except I think Kevin and I, but, um, it was, uh, all the notifications were given out to the abutters. So, uh, this happens quite often, um, we get no response at the, at the planning board meetings, but then when construction starts, people get upset, they hear about a project later on, they get upset and then they say, why wasn't I notified? Well, everybody that was legally, uh, within the distance of, of that project was, was notified. We had, uh, several public hearings, we had site visits there, and, um, we also met with all the department heads, uh, we met with, uh, the fire department, so the fire department, uh, okayed this, they looked at it, we went through it with the, with the fire department. So, um, to say that, nothing was done behind closed doors, I mean, everything was in, in the, in the public. But unfortunately, people are working and they, they either don't see the notifications or they're not within the certain amount of feet from the project, but it was all, it was all held under public hearing. So, and, and now, and now it's been approved. So, which, I can understand what everybody's talking about, I can understand their concern. I wish everybody that was here now that's concerned was there at the first round of meetings when we, when we first, uh, heard this, but there were very few people there, very few people that came. So...
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, if you get up, give us your name and address again, please.
This is like... Patty Cooney, five Canterbury Path. This all happened when Corona was going on, is that what you're...
No, no, this was before the, the epidemic.
Because I lived in Carver this whole time and my thing, yeah, I don't live near where that is, I used to, but I live on the power lines and if that happens, that's my house, you know, like that kid was saying, that's kinda whipped down this thing and like the other women said, if we can stop this, we have to stop this. I mean, like, yeah, moratoriums aren't going to stop it, but if these people haven't, like how he had said, you can't go back and trace the paper trail to it, so how can those poles be stuck in the ground and we can't do anything about it? But, you know, huge companies, they're, whatever's stopping it somehow that way, why can't we do the same thing and stop this from continuing on until we can have some more research and have a better plan? Lady and gentleman had said that, you know, fire people are gonna have to be trained in this and it's, you know, it's just, I wasn't here for this stuff, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you, I think you got a bunch of projects, uh, pushed together there, but, but the fire, the fire department did look at this project and, uh, and, and it was required, uh, under the conditions that the fire department have, uh, training for anything that was out there. We, our, our fire department is, is, uh, we, we have an excellent fire department, they look at all, all these things and they look into the training.
We get to have more research, I mean, I don't know anything about lithium batteries and I don't think people knew stuff about lithium batteries back then either.
Like I said, this was all done under a previous hearing, but all, you know, then all of a sudden, the word gets out, I think what happened is we didn't hear, I, I didn't hear any response, we, we, there were very few neighbors that came to this. And so we had the hearings and they were conducted like they were supposed to be conducted and then the project was approved. And then it went to the state and it seems that, for whatever reason, it may have been in the paper or something, and then I think more people from Carver read the article about this going to the state and then they became concerned and they didn't attend, they didn't attend the, the meetings here.
So when was the actual meeting? When was...
Oh, I don't have the dates.
Mr. Chairman, again, we...
We're going off.
There was a public hearing notice and the public hearing notice was on a moratorium and I'm, I am getting, yeah, very nervous that we're, we're trying to...
I'm just trying to explain because you have, you know, people that are concerned, they're angry and they're upset, but, uh, okay. Um, so what, so my question is, is what does, I mean, this is a moratorium on Cranberry Point.
No, it, it...
Oh, it's just, oh, oh, also for all the battery, it's, it's for all the battery...
Anything that's gonna come forward.
Yeah, okay, because it can't work for Cranberry Point because it's already approved, okay? So, okay, so this is, so since we, we already, and, and this is gonna affect some of the solar that we have because the old solar didn't have battery storage, but some of the newer, uh, solar arrays do have battery storage, it's just usually just one container. So, um, I, my way of thinking is, is I guess that if, since we already voted to, uh, do a moratorium on the solar, solar can't go forward anyway... voted to do a moratorium on the solar, solar can't go forward anyway because it, that involves a battery storage. So I suppose at the same time, we could look at the batteries, the, the battery storage situation and the solar. They're both together, really.
Yep. Dan Friggin, I want to apologize to you gentlemen. I lost my temper, but this is to show the state and the other companies that we are taking action, we're against this. Again, I've been with the committee that's been with us talking to the state and the state has held up this permit now for three, four months because they're waiting to see what the people of the town really want to do. And if we can push this through and get it to a town vote and say no, then the state will take notice and the state will hold up the permit so we can really evaluate.
Well.
It doesn't have anything.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that'll happen, but, but it.
It's been four months and the state has not made a decision yet.
Okay. All right. So I guess, is there anyone else that wants to speak? Yes. Give us your name and address again.
About 117 Centus Street. With all due respect, I don't understand why this would even go through, knowing the risks and where it's being placed and, and how our, our home values will go down as a result of this. I know that if, had I gone to, when I first moved here in 2009, I never would have moved here if I had known something like that was going on. I would not have put my kids in a town like this.
No, I, I underst, I understand, but we, but we're, we're talking about an article here as, as Amy from KP Law, our attorney, towns attorneys have said that this is for a moratorium on the battery storage. That's what we're talking about.
With all due respect, I understand that.
Yep.
But this is a heated topic and we can't just break it down into semantics. I mean, this is, this is people's lives. They're, like, my sister and my mother live on Craig Street, like Woodhaven, like that whole neighborhood. There's people here that live all around there. This, I mean, one, one thing, a brush fire hitting the, the power line and kaboom, we're all dead. We're all gone. And the company won't care.
Well, we, we're not here to discuss that though. We're not here to discuss that. We're here just for, about the moratorium. We can't talk about the project. The, the project's already been approved.
The project has still gone through the state though.
Right. It's still going through the state. It's been approved by the town.
So just get out there and vote and vote yes on the moratorium and make the town, make the boards stand behind us. They need to, before, now is your chance. Now is your chance to say, we're going to protect you because that's why you were elected.
Well, okay, I, I understand that. I, I kind of take offense to that because.
Cranberry Point, I'm going to pass out these letters. Cranberry Point is worried about it. We can stop this project. We can. And we just need, we all need to show up. I don't care what, what the attorney says. I don't care what the interim town planner says. Read what they said.
All right. So is, is there anybody else that wants to speak before we close the public hearing and vote to recommend or not recommend?
Uh, Louis, I just have one.
Oh, yeah. Okay, board membership.
Um, with regards to, so by approving this, they're going to be wanting to look at the, at the bylaws for battery storage and whatnot. What actual bylaw number are they going to be looking at?
We don't have a bylaw for battery storage.
Okay. So what bylaw?
Not that I.
What bylaw did they use?
I don't know. You'd have to, you'd have to go back and look at it. We'd have to look at that information.
Okay.
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Wouldn't that give us a chance to make a bylaw then?
Yes, it would.
It, it could be discussed. Certainly could be discussed.
Mr. Gatski, it was simply added to the, it's my recollection that it was simply added to the use table as an allowed use and really no definition, no.
Right.
No provisions, no, no requirements. So.
Yeah, so.
This would be a great opportunity to do that.
Right. And, and I think, I, I think that's might be some of the concern of some of the citizens that because it's the only place, my research, that's the only place that I could find it. That's why I was asking the question. And so as far as abutters, setbacks and different things like that, it's kind of hard to pin down exactly how far away that they would be looking.
Yeah, it would simply.
If they go for the normal.
To the dimensional tables.
If they go, if they go with the normal solar setbacks, you're looking at 200 feet and there's no abutters at 200 feet.
Right, except if you are doing standalone batteries, you could be looking at the regular, you know, the regular setbacks for any building.
Right. Which would be 30, 40, and 50 feet. Right. All right. Would the chairman accept the motion?
Yes. If there's nobody, nobody else that wants to speak, I'll, okay, if you could come up, please, and just give us your name and address.
It's 25 minutes. It seems like the planning board, not all of us, you know, working and like you said, can't make the meeting.
Right.
So we elected you guys to look out for the town, businesses that are trying to come into town and make money. So it's sort of like a no brainer. I think most of us are sitting there and say, no, not going to have battery storage or the solar panels and stuff. So I think, you know, it just comes down to common sense as far as, I think, most of us.
Okay. Well, like I said, we, we did, we did have a hearing and we went through the process and the planning board at the time was, was satisfied with what we did. But we're getting off again. I don't want to get into that. Yes, Ms. Norma?
There was something that was said before. I don't think any of the abutters were notified because.
They were.
No, because the project is 400 feet away and I believe that the requirement is 200 feet.
300.
So I don't believe anybody was notified.
I don't know. We'd have to look back, but I, I can't believe that. We all, we always notified. Okay, all right.
Nobody got one.
It wouldn't be abutting the pro, project. It would be abutting the property.
It's just under the table. It was very secret.
All right. So any, anybody else have any other? Okay, let's close the public hearing.
Connie made a motion.
Can Elise Shay make a motion to close the public hearing on Article 38? Is that correct?
38.
38.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shay to close the public hearing, a second by Mr. Gatski for the discussion, seeing none. Let's vote, Mr. Shay.
I will, if it's all right, I will make a statement before.
Okay.
Um, y'all, I've been a, a large proponent of the establishment and review of the battery storage laws for a long time. And that being said, Canellie Shay will vote aye.
John Gatski votes aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous to close the public hearing. All right, to recommend this article to town meeting.
Canellie Shay makes a motion to recommend this article to town meeting.
I'll second that.
No, we, we just vote.
Oh, Canellie Shay says aye.
John Gatski recommends.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
All right. So that was unanimous. All right. So, uh, so let's go on to.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
TDR.
Okay. So next is a public, okay, so this is Article 20. It's the TDR zoning bylaw, Section 2700, Transfer of Developmental Rights Bylaw Amendment. And then, I don't know. Uh, okay.
It's a law.
So this is, all right, please, we're trying to video through the notes. If you could go out in the hallway and talk, I would really appreciate that so we could continue the hearing.
I don't know where it is.
Try sort of a good one.
It's, okay.
It's this one.
Where do you go?
It's this one here.
Where are we?
What page is that, Connie?
It's, it's actually a separate in the map too.
Was it one of your papers?
Yeah, there you go. You got it in here.
Ah, there it is.
Headed upside down.
Yeah, do you want to present this? Yeah, okay.
Can we, can we request for a recess?
We want to do a 10-minute recess?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. It's 10 minutes of nine. We'll, we'll come back at nine o'clock. We'll recess for 10 minutes. Yeah, go ahead. Nine, so let's get to the public hearing about Article 20, TDR zoning bylaw, 2700, Transfer of Developmental Rights Bylaw Amendment. And, and let me hand this over to Mr. Shay who is the, the chairman of the zoning bylaw review committee and.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Transfer of development rights. Basically, it's about saving open space that the town wants to preserve and redirecting the development of that to where the town would rather see development. And generally, that's where the infrastructure's available to do that. The old TDR bylaw that was on the books was not skewed in favor of the town and the numbers were ridiculously out of proportion to what our town could handle. In the old TDR bylaws, if you had six properties and you made it them affordable and age restricted, the number was multiplied by three and then by six. So the numbers were incredibly high. We brought that down and added extra protections, much stronger defense for the town and the ability for the town to control the growth and look to save some of the more important areas in town, certain aquifers, open space, scenic views. And a lot of that you can see on the map that's attached to the zoning bylaw. The old map was rather vague and kind of covered large swaths of territory. What the zoning bylaw committee tried to do with the help of Serpent, and I, I see Bill and Helen here who have worked super, super hard. They're from our local regional planning agency to help us bring this into something that both protects and serves the town rather than being an open invitation for predatory development. And it allows the town to control its growth without being forced into corners that the old bylaw was rather loose on. You can all read it that the changes are much more in line with our, what our town can use and work with to develop and use with the developers to create smart growth in our town, more concentrated in, say, the center of town, North Carver, where the wire and the infrastructure is available, while trying to preserve a lot more of our open space scenery and features for our aquifers. And that, that's really the basis of the TDR. It's a very extensive bylaw, but on the other hand, it allows developers to trade up by saving and putting into conservation certain areas of land. It gives them a greater density in other areas. So we're not really adding to the density, but we're just moving it from one place to another. This law was already on the books, but it was very open and broad and, and certainly did not favor the town in, in any sense of the word. I, I hope everybody takes a moment to look it over. And again, I want to thank Phil and Helen for the exceptional amount of work they've done keeping us on track and bringing this, this to the town as a, a well researched and well thought out from a broad spectrum of citizens of the town. Thank you very much. Is there anything Bill or Helen would like to say? I'd like, I would certainly encourage it if you, if you feel up to it.
Connie, I think that was a really great summary. We certainly have more information on the, you know, about the county history and where TDR can be from to begin ones that we could go into, but maybe just leaving it here for now.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. Larry, I want to board. Yeah, we're, if you want, if you want us to, I could go a little bit of the history if you wanted to.
Well, whenever you feel, I'm opening the door for you guys and Phil, you're usually not short on, on things to say, so please step on up.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm Bill LaFellatano. I'm the environmental planner with Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District. I work with Helen. Helen's the director of our environmental program at Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District. Serpent, I'm trying to use my teacher voice for you. Serpent, when we started working with the town, actually, as Connie was saying, it has a very long history. It's been on books for a long time. It goes back to 2001 master plan. The town decided to enact a transfer development district bylaw after the 2001 master plan. It took a long time to do it even then. There was an interim planner at the time, Greg Emein from Southeast Regional Planning, Serpent, who was working with the town. You were in between planners then. And the town decided to do it. We put a bylaw together and the bylaw referred back to a map that was in your original master plan from 2001. Unfortunately, the map was not a map. You wanted your bylaw to be tagged to a map based on a map, but the map was a graphic with arrows that showed potential transfer areas, you know, business center of town. You can go this way, this way, as our town, as our land moves. So it doesn't work that way. So in 2004, 2005, you brought to town meeting, adopted the initial bylaw, but it was tagged to that map. That didn't work, so that's kind of incomplete. Then you decided to amend it in 2008, 2009 when they did the first South Coast Rail Corridors Study. And you kind of wanted to tag it to the South Coast Rail Corridors Study map that showed areas to preserve and areas to develop, priority protection areas, priority development, kind of what you were just referring to, that kind of singled out open space areas that were desirable and areas in the town that had the carrying capacity to accommodate more dense development. Well, the bylaw was amended and the language is amended, but the bubble map, because it was kind of a bubble map, again, it wasn't very specific, wasn't adopted. The bylaw was pushed forward to the town, the town's next master plan. We, we had the privilege of working with the town in 2015, 2016. Again, the bylaw was referred to, there were some amendments made, but it also pointed out some holes in the bylaw, the inconsistencies that you were pointing out before. The numbers just weren't working out with the town with the old bylaw. And again, the language said it was tagged to a map that technically didn't exist because the only map that it was ever tagged to was the 2001 bylaw, which again, was a graphic. So the bylaw review committee were on a sin this night to update what was a very sound master plan the public put together. It was a very public process. And you did a great job as a town putting the master plan together, but now you really had to clean up some of the deficiencies, especially because the TDR was on the books. And as you said, the developer could come in, the developer's really first point of engagement with the town is through its master plan. They'll look and see what a town wants. Where do you want development? How much development? Where do you want conservation? What amenities do you want to preserve? So again, master plan addressed that. The bylaw review committee realizing that there were these deficiencies in bylaw, the existing bylaw, asked us to come in. We wrote a grant, again, the Buzzards Bay Project, they were very gracious in, in granting us some funds to work with the town. And it was, it was a long process. We worked for about a year. And I think one of the great things is Helen had experience with this before too. And putting fresh eyes on, I mean, historically, like you said, I've been here forever, as long as dirt. So I had a lot of the history. Helen did a great job looking at technically what it was lacking, where it was lacking, how the numbers, like you said, didn't really work. And with her GIS skills, she put together a fabulous map for the town. This is what the town always wanted. Let's limit the process. Let's limit areas. Let's look where we have carrying capacity. Let's look where we have the ability to add density. And it benefits the town. It's, it's a win-win for the town. So the bylaw that you're bringing to town meeting as amended goes a long way to meeting the things that you were talking about. And if you have technical questions, I would turn it over to Helen. She did a fabulous job working, I mean, on the fly, on a screen, on the fly, on a computer with the committee, making sure that we got everything right. So.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it. And all the work that you've put in towards the town too.
More funding, grown man. More fun than grown men should have.
All right, uh, with that, is there anybody out in the, uh, audience that would have any questions?
Joanna Layton, for, I'm sure, as a last little member of the redevelopment. I'm looking at your map, the purple receiving area and up in the upper corner is the green business park. You're planning on moving...
It's, uh, it's actually zoned for planned neighborhood development.
Excuse me?
That area is actually zoned for planned neighborhood development, so it, it fitted well with, uh, putting it on the, um, TDR map as currently there's no definitive takers on the land.
Well, the, the property is being bought. It's 277 acres and that little piece we talked about yesterday is seven acres. That's 284 acres that are already owned privately, or will be owned. So Route 44 Development owns that property.
To be fair, all of these properties in the receiving area are owned, yes. They're not, none of these are town properties. It's, it's all based on access to infrastructure like, uh, water, roadways. And it was based on the master plan. Um, that particular, uh, project at the time when this map was done, eight, eight months ago roughly, last June. Um, there's no information. And currently, there's, there's been nothing put forward to the town to define or definitively address it. But it's a receiving area as, as available because it's, it's zoned that way.
But wait a minute, this is Green Business Park. Is that commercial? Will be finished. This is commercial, green business park, privately owned, 284 acres.
Along with every other receiving property in here is all almost commercial because there's a commercial aspect to the TDR. They all have to be within a reasonable distance from a public water supply, which as you know, the, the North Carver area that you're referencing is. Uh, and it is also, according to the use chart, available for planned neighborhood development, which is a mixed-use commercial and residential neighborhood. So this is, this does not in any way affect, um, the green business park. Uh, the owners of the property can do whatever they want. But what this does is it opens more doors for them and makes their property more valuable as the ability to, uh, concentrate development and save other areas of the town. So if somebody came in and bought that property and did a, offered a, or had a proposal for a planned neighborhood development, mixed-use commercial, residential, uh, it would allow them to, uh, develop that property to a much better extent than what is currently available.
So let me, let me ask you some questions.
Sure.
John Q. wants to, uh, do, interact with the TDR and says, you know what, I want to send my property over to that area.
Does he own it?
He owns, let's assume he owns the, the sending.
No, that doesn't...
Am I, am I misconstruing something?
Yes, because how it works is it would be the owner or developer of the receiving property that would go out to find sending areas to purchase and then turn over to conservation, um, to save, to, to, to remove the building rights on the other area land. And what he does is he purchases the building rights and therefore can get a more increased density on, on the receiving area, which is the purple. The, the green areas from the sending areas are all private. Everything on here is privately owned. What the committee did was using the master plan and, and with the help of SERPET, identify some of the more important places that they felt, um, needed to be preserved for open space or aquifers. And then offer the opportunity to the receiving areas to further improve their properties. For instance, um...
What if they refuse?
Well, they don't have to, it's their property. They don't have to sell it, they don't have to, to buy it. It's, that's how it works, that's, that's the free market system. We don't have anything to say in this. We can't force anybody to do anything. We're just putting the offer out there and saying, "Robie's Oil in, in North Carver there." Um, he might want to retire. Somebody might want to come in and he's got five acres in there. So rather than being able to put up, say, three residences or one commercial building, he can purchase sending areas or not necessarily purchase the sending area, but purchase the building right of the sending area. So it would be restricted from building for, for the future of the town of Carver. And he could take those building rights and use it to do an increased density. So he could do, say, a mixed-use commercial on the bottom with, uh, townhouses on top. Or even separate them with the Dunkin' Donuts out front and, and a small, you know, little subdivision out back. But the TDR gives them the opportunity to use either a singular structure or multiple structures. But because of all the receiving areas are in the commercial areas, uh, there is a commercial requirement of a minimum of 25% of the foot, uh, foot space is to be commercial. Because one of the big concerns with the committee was because commercial space is so limited in the town of Carver that we didn't want to lose the commercial potential of those properties. So we, we put in a requirement that at some portion of it must remain commercial, between 25 and 66%, I believe.
So my next question is, the MBTA housing coming in, 750 homes. Are you ready for this?
Is the town ready for it? Because...
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
Right, that, that's...
So how does the TDRs come into play? Because it's probably going to say, this is fantastic, we got 50 acres, don't worry. We're going to go...
Okay, so if, we'll start with the, the, the MBTA community is an optional thing that we don't have to necessarily join.
Then we won't get any grants, there's two major grants. Mass works, it's $3.2 million, that's in...
This is a completely different subject.
I'm sorry to tell you, sir, but...
Hold on, hold on, just a second.
Hold on, please.
The TDR already exists.
You asked the question, right?
Just so you know...
The TDR is already there, but so the old TDR...
I think that's the biggest problem, but you're making it better.
Right, well, the old...
Wait, so why don't we... So let Helen speak, please.
I'll give Helen a chance here.
I just want to, I, these are really, these are really good questions. And so, let me just point out, to kind of like start the conversation, that this is optional, right? So this gives developers, uh, alternatives to kind of a conventional subdivision or a conventional, um, you know, town home. Not that there are that many conventional townhomes here in Carver, but you know...
Excuse me, is that, is that thing on?
I don't know. Probably not.
I'm trying to hear you, I'm trying to hear you. So, if you don't mind...
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I, I get this all the time, I know, I need to just, it's, oh, I'll try to project. But so basically, it's, it's an option. That's kind of just the bottom-line thing to say is that this isn't a requirement, it just gives the developer... It gives the developer, um, uh, another option to consider when it comes to town. They don't have to, to, to do this by any means. They could go with a conventional subdivision or anything like that. But this just, um, it provides an advantageous option to the town in terms of trying to, to save areas that are really precious and worth protecting, trying to channel that development into a part of town that has more infrastructure. And I, I do think, um, so the MBTA requirement is still a little bit up in the air in that the state, today actually was the last day to provide comment about that process. It's going to be interesting to see what they come back with, um, in terms of who this will apply to and what their final parameters will be. But this, um, this could provide kind of work in tandem with the TDR. For example, if someone wanted to, um, if the town eventually had to do that, if they were mandated to do it by the state, which the town has still, we said, refused. He said, no, we're going to just give up the development, or the, the grant opportunities, right? That's an option. But, um, you might consider how that multifamily requirement could be integrated with TDR so that maybe at least a developer could use this mechanism. And yes, the housing might have to go in, but maybe you could also save some land on the back end. Not that that would definitely happen, but it would certainly allow for that option and show people where those kind of precious areas that the town wants to preserve are. Um, it'd be interesting to see how the two processes could be integrated. I, you know, haven't got that all the way through, but I have a feeling that they probably could be.
That, that's very scary.
I know, yeah, but, I mean, the MBTA thing is definitely a difference.
Yeah, well, I don't...
Not what we're talking about today, so let's, you'll, I'll leave it at that, but...
When you want somebody else's money.
Yes, I, I know, it is scary.
Yeah, it is very scary because with a TDR, the state, you could chop up. Instead of having 50 acres, contiguous 50 acres, the 750 homes, you could just chop it up.
Well, and do you think that the TDR...
Yeah, I think we're getting off, we're getting up to weeds now.
The TDR areas are contiguous, I should say that. They're, you know, on the same, not the receiving area map. Those areas at least are contiguous.
So, so I have one last question, you can go ahead. Up in the upper corner here, which is the green business park, is...
The largest purple.
Yes.
It's purple. That, uh, if you follow through with us, the redevelopment, we have articles and we're hoping that it all passes. And Hillwood would come in and build his, uh, two, uh, 1.8 square, a million square feet, which takes up more than 90% of this area right here. So how is this TDR going to benefit from that if that happens? I'm hoping it does happen.
It won't prevent whatever they want to do. Like if they're putting in warehouses or whatever their plan is, it definitely doesn't preclude them from, from that. You know, it, they could go forward with exactly what they're planning. They have no, there's no requirement here. It's just a, another option.
How can you take, how can you have this being an option when it's owned privately and warehouses are going to be on the site?
Ms. Layton, Ms. Layton, just, just, every, every receiving property on here, 90% of them, aside from the green business park, already have privately owned, commercial, industrial, um, various other... They're all privately owned. It just adds value to their property. It doesn't detract from their property. It doesn't put any onus on the property. It actually opens the property up that it becomes more valuable in the sense that it can be used for a greater development area.
But it's optional, they, they don't...
1.8 million square feet is going to be there.
Joanna, they don't have to do it if they don't want to do it. That's what he's saying. If, if they don't want to do it...
No, this is my point. Let's assume that this project goes. Town meeting passes everything. Hillwood builds when he has to build.
Yeah.
1.8 million, just whole area that is going to be consumed in the urban redevelopment. How can you still make it the same for TDRs if it's not being...
But then it would be out. It wouldn't be part of the TDR anymore.
You'll have to read through the map.
No, no, he won't because 50 years from now, if they decide to tear down that building, that the TDRs can still be there. He doesn't have to use them. There's no requirement on here. The landowner can do whatever they want with their land. Now, if Hillwood comes in and he says, "I've decided to use the TDRs and build a planned neighborhood development in there," that's his right as a property owner and we can't interfere with that. And nothing in the TDRs interferes with any property owner's right. It actually expands their right. For instance, if you're a cranberry owner and you're struggling and you don't want to put up solar, but you want to, and you want to save the, the value of your land and it happens to be a sending area, you could put the building rights for that area up for sale and that, that section of land will never be built on again. So he doesn't have to break it up into subdivisions. He can put it into, put it into a bank and offer it up for sale or offer it to developers so that they can use it on their property. Thus, he saves the open space and the, the land that's important to him. And whoever owns the other property can buy those credits and use those credits to develop it. There's no onus on the property owner. If anything, it gives an added increased value to the properties. And it, and it helps to, to direct growth in the town to the areas most able to support it along Route 58, uh, near the North Carver water supply and the center of town. Uh, there's a couple of public wells there. And, and that, that's, that's where, and because nothing's been... And even if something was proposed there, I think that the committee would have still included it because what it's zoned for and the ability it gives to the owner, whoever owns the property, because all of these properties are on, none of them are town-owned properties, and they're all commercial properties with unreachable distance. Uh, let's take for instance the Frosty Dog. There's no onus for him. This opens up an opportunity for, say, the Frosty Dog to use the Frosty Dog and expand his facilities to include a mixed-use residential that, that he didn't have before because he, his property couldn't handle the density requirements of the zoning bylaws. So this isn't subplanting the green business park or the, or the projects going on there. Hillwood could decide tomorrow to do whatever they want within the zoning laws of this property. That's not going to change. They're not telling him that he has to do any sort of mixed development on there at all. This is just an opportunity that some people, again, Frosty Dog, uh, Robie's gas station, might want to take advantage of in order to increase their, the value of their property.
All right, we gotta, we gotta move along, but, uh...
Well, we'll be...
I mean, this is like, this is like having a marijuana, marijuana overlay district. You, Joe, take it for example, at an example. You overlay the, the mari- marijuana district over 50 lots in town. Well, that doesn't mean that the marijuana is going to go in 50 lots. It, it, they have to negotiate with the owner. If the owner doesn't want it, then they don't have to do it.
Marijuana overlay district right on top of the green business park, isn't it?
Right, 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 so it's just...
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that.
So, but we gotta, we gotta, if...
I'm going to ask you about that map.
If, if, we gotta, we gotta move on because we got other things we gotta do tonight.
It'll be the MBTA, we'll be back.
All right.
MBTA will be back, yes.
Any other questions by anybody in the, in the audience? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Article 20 TDR zoning bylaw.
Can we, today we'll make a motion to close Article 20 TDR, um, bylaws.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, a second by Mr. Robinson, uh, for the, uh, discussion. Seeing none, let's, uh, vote, Mr. Shea.
Canary Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Helen Cidillo, aye.
All right. So, uh, we'll just take a roll call vote to recommend this to town meeting. Mr. Shea?
Canary Shea says aye. Point of order...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, that motion would be to approve, recommend the TDR bylaw as amended for town meeting?
Yeah, okay, then Canary Shea will make the motion to approve the TDR bylaw as amended.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, uh, by Mr. Shea, a second by Mr. Robinson. Those in favor, please say aye. Oh, no, uh, let's take a roll call.
Canary Shea says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Helen Cidillo, aye.
Okay, so, okay, now, uh, vote to recommend to the amended, uh, Article 20 to town meeting.
I didn't, I, we just did that, right?
Oh, is that what, we just did that, okay. All right, so it's done, we just have to do that then. Okay, so, okay, so that takes care of that. So now we go on to, uh, so we've finished all that. So let's start at the top. So to Article 10, um, so Article 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 19, we closed the public hearings last night. So, uh, now we, uh... So do you, uh, want to, is this going to be joint or you just... Well, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum here, so we just can open up.
Okay.
Well, this is just a vote by the planning board, correct?
It is, but we have a quorum here, so we just can open up.
Oh, right, yep, no, that makes sense.
Just, just a formality.
All right, go ahead, Chair.
Uh, having a quorum, uh, in attendance at the meeting, I call to order the Carver redevelopment authority.
All right, thank you. So let's start with Article 10. And so we're here, okay, Ms. what? Yes?
So Tom, I'm the interim town planner here in Carver. So what I put together, the members of the RDA and the members of the planning board have this sort of colorful document that I tried to color code the best that I can. And these are essentially the changes to the bylaw that were discussed last night. There were questions about amendments to the bylaw. So I was taking notes last night, conversation with town council, conversation with the folks from the RDA today. So the articles you see in front of you, the things that are in black and bold are the things that were initially recommended to be changed under the advertised article. The things you see in the blue font with a box around it, those are things that were previously recommended to come out, like the setbacks for footnote 11 in Article 10 that are back in the bylaw. And then the things that are in the bold blue in a box are things that were sort of new that were added from last night, such as in Article 11, we talked about the height limitation only in the Green Office Park, where we were having this discussion about solar, subject to the planning board's site plan review. So what I did is I modified all those articles to show you the changes from yesterday.
You don't...
To make it as clear as possible, as graphically as possible, as I could with my limited skillset.
I think you did a great job, Tom. I think it really clarifies everything.
All right, so with that, I'll turn it back over for your votes.
All right, so let's do Article 10. Is there any questions by any of the planning board members?
I don't have any questions, but because we, there's no definitive project going in there and what the, what the usage table allows in there, I have concerns that it's not specifically restricted to the warehouse because what can go in there, a hospital, a school, a planned neighborhood, and then I have concerns with fire and safety involved in raising the height to sixty-five and the capacity of our town to handle it. So that's, that's all I have to say.
If I may, the police, fire, and safety did an exhaustive, exhaustive study of this. They spent almost a year. And if you've seen the presentations by Chief Weston, Chief DuFaully, and Chief Ryan, you would understand that at the point of the sixty-five feet, the proposed project, they have no concerns. And you can either take them at their word or not.
That's not what, well, that's, that's an unfair assessment by you and frankly, it's a poor attack on me. What I'm saying is, what we're being told is a warehouse distribution center, but because this property is zoned for much broader issues, including hotels, schools, planned neighborhoods, things that a sixty-five-foot height would allow would not be in line with safe regulations because the town is unable to handle something like that. And it's not just today, it's in the future, twenty years from now, or if we open up another green business zone. Frankly, I, my best recommendation with this would be to send it back to the planning board for further review.
Well, I think this is just given, given us a height. You know, the building doesn't have to be built to that height, but this is...
What building, Bruce? My question is what building? There's nothing just put before us.
It's just allowed, a building is allowed to be to sixty-five feet.
Okay, what if it's a hospital?
All that, it, all that goes for a special permit and site plan review when we get to it. We don't know that. I mean, we don't know exactly what's going on.
What if it's a hotel?
It still has to go...
It has to be allowed under the special permit.
It still has to go before the planning board.
And it still would have to meet fire and safety.
And this bylaw should have gone before the planning board too, and I highly recommend it come, it be returned to the planning board for further review. That's, that's how I feel about number 10. I don't think it was well put together or thought out. I believe that the fire department and the police department are acting in the best interest of town. We're one of the best fire departments and police departments in the area and it is unfair of you to push your particular feelings or in regards to that on me, so...
I'm, in what manner? I did not.
You just excuse me of saying that I could blame the fire chief or not. I'm telling you that he reviewed the proposal you put in front of him and I'm saying, we're the planning board and we don't have a proposal in front of us. There's nothing larked in stone. There's nothing to say if this doesn't pass or if it does pass that a hospital can't go in there or a school or a hotel or anything else of a sixty-five-foot height, which would, we are not capable in a safe and comfortable manner of dealing with. That's, that's what I'm saying.
And if that were the situation, that would all come out in site plan review.
That's right.
If, if Hillwood decided to back out of this process and George sold it to, or Route 44 sold it to, I don't know, Beth Israel, take your hospital, or the Hilton, take your, we'll take your hotel. It still has to meet the fire and safety. And I can tell you now that, you know, we wouldn't have the fire truck that they need for a hotel if that was the only thing that was going in there. You know, I can only say that the fire and police and safety did an exhaustive search and due diligence and they can, they feel they can fight anything that happens there and still keep the town of Carver safe in and of itself. I understand your concern that something else could go there because something else is allowed there.
Well, that's just it.
And at that point, that's where, at that point...
If it had gone through the planning department, maybe it would have been fully vetted. Oh, excuse me.
Thank you.
You go right ahead.
I was speaking before anyway. But at that point, the planning board does its due diligence itself. It's an exhaustive process for special permitting. If you have a hotel in front of you, if you have Hilton in front of you and you say it's going to be sixty-five feet, six, you know, five stories or so, and the fire chief comes in and says, "My ladder is thirty-two feet," it's pretty much a no-brainer. It's not going there. This is only the opportunity to attract a state-of-the-art facility in that position and allow the town to figure it out at town meeting.
If you're done?
I am done, sir.
Then I might. If it had gone through the proper planning process and through the planning board as a change to the zoning laws should, it would have been properly vetted and some, maybe some of the usage chart would have been changed and maybe more specific uses and requirements would have been put in here, and I just don't think it's up to par. And that's just my opinion.
Well, I beg to disagree.
Through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Shay, you've mentioned that, you said that, that the chief was acting on something that we, as the RDA, gave him.
I didn't say that, but...
Yes, you did.
You did.
No, I said that...
We can't go to the tape.
I said, as far as I know, what he was acting on was a warehouse distribution center as presented by you.
Well, all right, semantics. The, the fire chief hired a fire consultant who worked with him on the project, independent of the RDA. We were not ushering him through anything. We were not presenting him with anything. He worked with a fire consultant to come up with, with what was needed in town for the proposed project. Now, Hillwood, as you've seen, has just spent a lot of time and effort on developing this project as a one-point-eight-million-square warehouse. I don't really think they did it in order to say, guess what, it's a hotel now.
Oh, I don't, I don't believe that they're just going to drop their plans and throw in a hotel in there today, tomorrow, or any time in the future. I'm just telling you that this wasn't appropriately vetted and it leaves too many opportunities for problems in the, in the long run. And I, so, and that's all. And I'm sure I understood because I've read everything. See, I've read the fire reports and I've read what the chief had to say about it and I know about his reluctance in the beginning. I also know that he's fully on board at this point. But I'm not here to speak for the chief. I'm only here to speak for my position on the planning board and frankly, I don't think it was, it was vetted as well and as thoroughly as it should, and I think it should have been referred to the planning board for proper review and maybe some of these issues would have been settled.
I think we were supposed to be working together on this, that's all.
What, last night and tonight?
We presented in front of the planning board at least twice.
Well, you presented once.
In the fall.
No, no.
No, no. Maybe you came and talked about it.
I lose track of who we went around.
And I let a lot of my concerns be known and none of them were addressed unless, so... And that's, I guess that's how it goes.
That's how it goes.
All right, I, I mean, we can argue about this all night. Is there anybody that wants to add anything to this conversation?
It's not public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we closed the public hearing, all right. So any other planning board members have anything to say? Okay, seeing nothing, let's, seeing no one come forward, let's, let's vote. We've already closed the public hearing, so let's vote to recommend this, Article 10, to town meeting.
As amended.
As amended, okay.
Three, thirty-one, twenty-two.
Do you need a motion or...
Mr. Chairman? That would be the...
Yes. Oh, well, it's, yeah, it's a public hearing.
Yeah, I know it's not a public hearing, but it was, if the chair would allow me to make a few comments about what was just discussed.
Sure, go ahead.
It was within the realm of what we were discussing last night.
If you could just give us a name for the record.
Sorry, John Smolak, attorney for Hillwood.
Hey.
When we had the discussion yesterday, we talked about the community benefits agreement. And that community benefits agreement is based on providing, among other things, the fire protection, police protection, and the emergency services protection, which were necessary for warehouse distribution facility. Hillwood is committed to, assuming that the marked articles are adopted, is committed to taking the next step to propose a warehouse and distribution facility. And so, so Hillwood has provided for those mixed uses. Hillwood was to look at an alternative use that, that, and that was sixty-five feet in height, which they wouldn't do. But if they did, the fire chief would have to be satisfied, they'd have to get a new agreement created in order to support the fire protection and all else to provide for the protection of the health and safety of that structure. So, you know, I think we did cover that. We did commit in multiple agreements with the town to propose a warehouse and distribution facility. And I think that what we provided yesterday, or based on what was discussed last night, I think we provided everything that was requested by the board last night. And so, including putting the language back in, considering footnote 11. So we thought we had done everything that was asked of us yesterday. So, you know, I'm not sure what else I can say other than the fact that Hillwood is committed to develop a warehouse and distribution facility. If Hillwood goes away, then so does the ability to fight a fire at a facility at sixty-five feet height. Someone else would have to come in and demonstrate, not only to the planning board, this project's site plan review process, but also to the fire chief, that fire safety is maintained as a result of that alternative use.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's take a vote.
We're here. Tom says we got to make a motion and the motion, Caneely Shay so makes the motion to approve Article 10 as amended for the one.
Okay. Okay. Also, we need a second.
I'll second it.
So a motion by Mr. Shay, second by Mr. Robinson for the discussion. Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote.
You got to designate Mr. Dion.
No, the five members of the board are free to vote. Not a special permit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Kevin and I talked earlier. I agree with you, did it last night, made sure you had the minutes, the minutes, the tech, things like that.
Does this fall under the Mullins rule?
Mr. Shay?
Caneely Shay says no.
Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says no.
Kevin Robinson says, yes.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, so that's three, four, and two against. All right, Article 11, definitions, height of certain accessory structures. Are there any questions about that? We did, did we change any, we didn't change any of that, did we?
The change is that was adding the center height limitation in Green Business Park.
Okay. All right, so, so we need a, we need a motion again? We have to vote on this? Okay, so we need a motion to...
To approve Article 11 as amended in the three, thirty-one, twenty-two.
Okay.
Caneely Shay will make a motion to approve Article 11 as amended.
All right, and John Gasky, so Mr. Shay made the motion, John Gasky second. Okay, so let's take a vote. Mr. Shay?
Caneely Shay says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, so that was unanimous. Okay, Article 12, access driveways and non-residential premises.
There were no changes on that.
Okay, so, so we entertain a motion to, to recommend Article 12 as written.
Caneely Shay will make a motion to recommend Article 12 as written. Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shay, second by Mr. Gasky. We'll take a vote. Mr. Shay?
Caneely Shay says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
All right. Article 13, rezone from highway commercial HC to Green Business Park, GBP district. We didn't make any changes on that.
No changes.
No changes on that. So entertain a motion to recommend Article 13 to town meeting as written.
Caneely Shay will make a motion to recommend Article 13 to town meeting as written.
I'll second that.
So it's a second by Mr. Robinson. Uh, okay, so let's take a vote. Mr. Shay?
Caneely Shay says aye.
John Gasky says nay.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Okay, so that's four, four, one. All right, Article 14, exemptions, Article 14 was exemptions from large-scale ground mounted solar voltaic installation. This is for the roof-mounted solar panels. We didn't, did we make any changes to that?
If I may, so previously, small-scale ground or building-mounted solar electric installations had been lined out, that's been put back into the bylaw. The other change was that that would be subject to planning board site plan review. It previously said by right in proposed exemption, three, five, eight, oh, point one, five. So by right was deleted and its pledge was put subject to planning board site plan review.
All right, so entertain a motion to recommend Article 14 to town meeting as amended.
Caneely Shay recommends, makes a motion to recommend Article 14 to town meeting as amended.
Do we hear a second? Second by Mr. Gasky. So Mr. Shay, then Ms. Gasky. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Shay?
Caneely Shay says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sedillo, aye.
Thank you. Article 15, site plan review, performance, and parking lot lighting standards. Article 15, site plan review performance and parking lot lighting standards. Do we make any changes to that? I think we put poles in there?
Right.
Okay, just the word poles. There was a question about what the lights were on if you polled. All right, entertain a motion to recommend this, Article 15, to town meeting as amended.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Kevin, second by Ellen, roll call vote.
Caneely Shea says nay.
John Gasky says nay.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sudillo, aye.
So three, two. All right. Article 16, amend section 3521, permitted signs for Green Business Park District.
No changes there, just adding it to the table.
Okay, so entertain a motion to, to recommend this to town meeting as written.
I'll make that said motion.
So Ellen, Ellen made the motion. So here a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gasky. All right, let's take a vote.
Caneely, Caneely Shea says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sudillo, aye.
Okay, so that was unanimous. Article 17, use regulation schedule, industrial, allow privately-owned wastewater treatment facilities as an accessory use.
I thought this was withdrawn.
If I may?
Yes, Tom, please.
Yeah, I, I think what we said, that it was frankly moved because a groundwater, a wastewater treatment plant is going to be permitted by DEP, and it is a permitted use as accessory to an industrial as it sits currently. But the question was, in a review, what would the Board of Health say? So I talked to the Board, our health agent today, and he said, if this came in to the Board of Health, the Board of Health would say, this is reviewed by DEP. And he went on to say that DEP does report to the town, much like we have talked about before, so the operator of a private wastewater treatment plant makes a report to DEP, and DEP copies that to the Board of Health. So the question that came up last night was, well, it would be allowed and would be subject to the planning board review, and that's the text amendments that were there, but as it says, it's really not subject to that because it's a, it's a by right, because it's accessory to the other development. So this is sort of belton suspenderings, the belton suspenders that was on there, so it's very well supported by we.
All right, so, so we didn't change anything to, to it as it was.
What was changed was, previously it said, which were permitted by right as an accessory use in structure. Now it says which are allowed as an accessory use in structure subject to planning board's site plan review. It's the very last page.
I didn't think there was any need to change anything. Wait, we're talking about Article 17, right?
Right.
Yeah. Because.
Yeah, I thought that that was withdrawn last night.
Yeah, I thought so, too, because it says does not include packaged treatment plants as accessory uses to commercial industrial development.
Didn't you guys withdraw?
It has, it has no bearing on the proposed project.
If you would like, yes, please, this clarification.
John Smolak, attorney for Hillwood. The reason this is in supervision here is just to make sure we got our i's across our t's because of the packaged wastewater treatment plant as a principal use is allowed in the use chart, but that footnote relates to the potential, it can be read to mean that it's excluded from a permitted use. So what I've tried to do, and what we've tried to do, I thought yesterday, was to say that basically it is a use that's permitted as an accessory use subject to planning board's site plan review. So what was potentially permitted by right, we're providing the planning board with additional teeth to review that if they so desire, even though it is a use, a state, subject to a state groundwater district permit, but understood your concerns yesterday were source issues and so on, so.
Well, no, actually, my issue was that it's moved, that it's allowed as an accessory use to commercial or industrial development. That was, that was my point.
Well, I guess the question is, is it in the chart? I have to just provide the issue.
Yeah, I don't think so. It's just, yeah, we're getting clarification, I suppose, too. All right, so, all right, so let's entertain a motion to recommend Article seven, 17 as amended to town meeting.
I'll make said motion.
John Gasky made the motion, here a second.
I'll second it.
Kevin Robinson, second. All right, let's vote, Mr. Shea?
Caneely Shea says nay, I don't see any point to it.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sudillo, aye.
All right. So the next is Article 19, zoning bylaw, section 3500, the signs amendment.
We didn't amend that at all.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, I didn't even find this one, but we do adjourn.
Okay, so that, oh, that wasn't part of your, your things, okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you all.
I hope you feel better, Ellen.
Thank you.
All right, so the last article was Article 19, zoning bylaw, section 3500, the signs amendment, and that was to take the signed bylaw and actually give that over to the building inspector. So I'll entertain a motion to recommend, and we didn't make any changes on that, so I'll recommend a motion to, to recommend Article 19 to town meeting.
I'll make that said motion.
Mr. Robinson. Okay, Mr. Robinson made the motion, second by Ellen Sudillo, roll call vote.
Caneely Shea says aye.
John Gasky says nay.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sudillo, aye.
All right, so that was four one.
That was four one?
Four one, yeah, Mr. Gasky voted nay. All right, we go to, so that's the end of all the articles that we have going to town meeting. The planning board member notes, does anybody have anything to say?
I hope to see everybody at town meeting.
You have to be crowded.
All right. Planning director notes?
Set them up.
Okay, we don't have any amendments. The next thing I'd like to say is, is that it, will we, the next, the next two meetings for the planning board would be April 12th and April 26th. So April 12th, are we going to have a meeting before the town meeting?
Yes, we have a room reserved at the school, this is the school.
Okay.
For, I want to say 6:00 PM prior to town meeting, it might be 6:30. In the event that something comes up and the planning board needs to take some action, it's just a standard practice that I have.
Okay.
Just in case.
Thank you. Okay. But we don't have anything, we don't have an agenda yet.
We do not.
Okay.
You know, sometimes people will say, there's a break between meetings, let's throw an A and R in there and see if we can get something coming in 21 days.
Okay.
So if something shows up, we'll add it to the agenda, vote it, and move on.
Okay. But you will notify us if we're going to have a meeting or not, if, if we need that. All right. All right, and then, so then the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting will be April 26th.
Yes.
And this is actually my last planning board meeting since I didn't run for reelection, and I just wish all the members of the planning board the very best to continue the work of the planning board, and I hope, I wish you all the best. And I'd just like to, I'd just like to say, it's, it's been wonderful working with Mr. Bott. I wish, we had met, I think, a month or two before, I wish, I wish he was here with us, but I just can't thank Tom Bott enough. He spent three nights this week, one night late with the RDA, and then two nights doing this, setting up all this equipment, doing everything that he does. It's amazing, I just can't thank him enough, so.
Please stay on.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Robinson, Kevin, and second by Mr. Shea. Let's take a roll call vote, Mr. Shea?
Caneely Shea says aye.
John Gasky, aye.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
Bruce Mackey, aye.
Ellen Sudillo, aye.
All right, good night, everyone, and have a good night.
Thank you.